I finally figured all that stuff out. It's kind of cool.
I called the meeting in order. Can you put it through me for the pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you all for joining the July fourteenth council meeting. We have invitation speaker by Larry Kyle.
There we go. Hey, you can hear me now. So glad to be here on this occasion. So glad to know that we still have a government that is blessing the flag that we so richly stand for. And tonight is a special night. Each night we get together and call upon the Lord as a special night to help us to make the right decisions that this board has set up to do for the city of Benson. So as we are praying, we're praying that God gives you the ability to think ahead and what this little town needs. I've been out here for four, nearly four and a half years, and this is home. You tell by my accent, I speak a little different than most. I was asked the other day, this is where country are you from? And I said Arkansas. He said, well, we speak English. And I said, well, I speak Arke. Sometimes it's a little hard to understand. But if you're tuned in with God, you always understand what God has to say. So please bow your heads with me. Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, as we are gathered together here this night, we ask you to just pour out your Spirit from the front of this building to the back of it, from the top to the bottom, that your will be done. We ask you bless each and every person that's here, that they are able to conduct and listen and be assertive to everything that's going on. And Lord, we give you the glory and the honor for the privilege to be born in a country that says we've got the right to have our own opinion about things. And so, Lord, be with us throughout this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Onto employee recognition. We have Mr. Nicholas Carpenter. Is he here?
Why, thank you.
Madam Deputy Director, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Foyle. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Conrad. Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Tapia.
Here.
Councilmember Romero. Vice Mayor Johnson, we have a form.
Thank you. And I want to point for the record that Mayor Conrad and Councilmember Romero are excused. So we'll do employee recognition. We have Nicholas Carpenter up here for five years of service in the city of Benson. We have a little write-up for him. Corporal Nicholas Carpenter had a varied career before his employment with the Benson Police Department, beginning with an active duty assignment in the U.S. Army, sometimes spent at the Arizona Department, a public safety trooper. Thank you for your service. While this is Nick's second stint with the Benson Police Department, he quickly established himself as a leader and has become an integral part of the leadership team. Nick is an Arizona Post certified instructor and is the Benson Police Department's lead firearms instructor and senior K-9 officer. Under Nick's guidance, firearm qualification scores are near perfect for every sworn member. The dedication to his craft is further exemplified as he is certified SWAT officer for the Cochise County Regional SWAT Team. Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Molly has a fantastic milestone here, twenty years of service with the Benson, city of Benson. All right. For her write-up, we are pleased to celebrate Sergeant Molly Ingraham's twentieth anniversary with the Benson Police Department. Throughout her career, Molly has proven to be an extremely dedicated to the Benson Police. Yes. So twenty years. Benson Police Department and the city of Benson, she has consistently gone above and beyond in daily tasks to ensure continuity with the community and the police department. A valued member of the Benson Police Department's leadership team, Molly has multiple years of experience as a detective before her promotion to sergeant in 2021. As administrative sergeant, Molly is responsible for background investigations for all police department, new hires, as well as the Arizona Post credentials and training for all sworn members. Molly is the assigned supervisor for the Benson Investigations Team of detectives and crime scene, as well as the Benson Animal Shelter. One of the most impressive attributes for Molly's leadership is the exemptional solve rate of felonies committed in Benson that most police agencies would only dream of attending. Wow. Impressive.
That's the wonderful people I work with.
Next, we have a proclamation by the mayor. Proclamation, whereas the mayor and council of city of Benson joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Arizona families by providing child support services to improve economic stability and well-being of children. And whereas the state of Arizona will always be committed advocates for our children, whose safety and security remains on the top of mind. And whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and is better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life. And whereas the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first and humbly serving Arizona with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity. And whereas DCSS strongly advocates for parenting responsibilities because the parents and children benefit when both are engaged with their child at every stage, regardless of marital status. And whereas DCSS recognizes the commitment of legal guardians who accept responsibilities of children in the absence of parents. And whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on fiscal responsibility for most the safety and well-being of children provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunity for families to be able to enhance their children's future. And whereas Children's Support Awareness Month values parents, involvement in their child's lives, who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now, therefore, Joe A. Conrad, Mayor of City of Benson, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month. Okay, next we will have call to the public for agenda-related items. And please note that the time is three minutes and council is not able to address the speakers. So first, we'll have Mr. Dan Sprinkle.
Good evening, folks. I'm not going to be as entertaining as the Reverend was here, but I'm going to do the best I can. So I'm up here to talk to you something actually very serious. I oppose the reappointment of Lonnie Postgate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Postgate was present on November sixth, when the Planning and Zoning approved the conditional permit for ADI. He didn't, he along with the rest of the commission, didn't ask the hard questions. They didn't ask how much water are you going to use, or how many, how much resources are you going to consume, period? They didn't ask what are you going to be emitting into our air? And yet, the whole commission voted unanimously to approve that conditional permit. So I'm here as a member of this community to say I do not recommend that we reappoint Lonnie to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And next is Joanne, Ms. Joanne Cousins?
Hello, I want to actually second what Dan just said. I've read the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was, when this aluminum dynamics project was approved, and I was stunned that there were no questions asked. And they really should have done more research. I understand being on that commission is challenging. I understand for people that it's hard to get people to be on that commission. But I think given the concern that you can see in the people who are attending tonight, that probably if you put out a call for someone who wanted to volunteer that position, you would probably get quite a number of people who would be willing to do it. Because really what they're there for, in my mind, is to provide a protection for the community. And my biggest concern, I have a lot of concerns about this aluminum dynamics, but my biggest concern is the water. It's not any, any kind of plant, given their water needs, that should be situated in a desert. And if we continue with it, we will probably end up like Wilcox and beyond with dry wells. So that's my major concern and my request is that you seek someone else to be on the P and Z rather than him. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Misty Bloom.
Hi, you guys will have to forgive me, I gotta read from my phone here. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I would like to speak on Lonnie Postgate renewing his position with Planning and Zoning. The general development plan was just recently finalized, and I see several problems here, namely the problem that on November sixth, 2024, Mr. Postgate made the statement, this project will be a good thing for the city in reference to the aluminum dynamics casting facility. However, this project is in direct opposition to that, to this general development plan, what this is. The general development plan states to preserve residents' health, safety, and property values. Health and safety do not come from fifty-two tons of particulate emissions, PM two-point-five, that's very small, annually, and no one will want to live here if our prehistoric aquifer is depleted by the extraordinary use of water from this plant. No one buys a house with no water. General Development Plan states it will protect sensitive habitats and enhance the small-town rural character of Benson. The plant Mr. Postgate says will be good for the city potentially destroys habitat for federally protected birds, and a massive aluminum recycling facility does not enhance the small-town rural character of Benson. Therefore, I oppose his continued appointment on Planning and Zoning Committee. About property taxes, I oppose the property tax increase because it is important that residents feel we can trust those in authority to do the right thing in making choices for us. Since I have a large group of eight hundred people on Facebook feeling like they do not trust the city to make the right decisions, why would we trust what would be done with that increase? Allowing our town to be polluted while making us pay more to live here would cause even more mistrust.
Next, we have Ms. Tara Davis.
Councilman Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't have a whole lot to say on this item, other than I do oppose the reappointment of Lonnie Postgate for the reasons that you've already heard multiple times. And a lot of that has to do with reading the questions that were asked during that PZ meeting. And it, you know, the citizens that elect you trust you to represent them in some of their questions. And it just, it doesn't seem like the, the group that was there that night really had that in mind. Maybe it was more about getting out of there at a good time. I think you can see by, by the show up here, I can only imagine how many people would like to be here but aren't. You have citizen feedback on this. We have questions, lots of them. We trusted you to ask those questions that night, and that didn't happen. So for that reason, I oppose Lonnie Postgate as, as a PZ.
Uh, next we have Ms. Crystal Anderson.
Hello.
Hello.
That was loud. Um, I would like to discuss, also, I don't think Lonnie should be re-enlisted or re-upped. I know for a fact that I put in an application last week for the P and Z, and I know that a couple others did as well. So I think you do have some options to think about. Um, also, I don't think that we should raise our taxes, especially when I was reviewing the financials that were submitted with tonight's packet. When you spent five thousand dollars a month on uniform cleanings, I think you should just have your employees wash their own clothes. And then you won't have to raise our taxes, because previously it said, what, eight thousand dollars annually? I think you can make that up if people would just wash their own clothes. That's my two cents.
Next, we have Mr. Kenny, Kenny Janz.
Hello. A lot of you probably don't know me, but I got a lot of ties here in Benson. My family roots back to the forties. I feel, and I think a lot of citizens feel, that this council is so out of touch with us, you know? It seems like every project, they, they seek, like Vennando, the aluminum plant, it's something that is waterthirsty. I, I know there's been a lot of businesses throughout the years, such as IBM, Microsoft, so on and so forth, that don't consume a water-hungry desert. You know, this, this town's been here since eighteen eighty, hundred and forty years, and it's a tight-knit community. And, you know, you guys, you guys have to start listening to the people instead of trying to, to do stuff under the table, you know? This aluminum plant will not benefit us one iota if all the products being shipped to, what, Missouri, Michigan, or whatever. Okay? Um, find something that'll benefit this community, something that people want. They don't want an aluminum plant, they don't want Vennando, they don't want, they don't want seventy thousand more people. We can't support that kind of water table. You guys really need to take a look in the mirror and take a hard look at yourself. Because, you know, none of us people want this. Okay? And I, I think you guys ought to be ashamed of yourself for trying to pass this thing the way you did. And as far as the planning and zoning person, find somebody that's qualified. Okay, I spent twenty years of my life in the military. Okay? I'm not going to come here and, and just watch this town erode the way you guys want it to erode. Okay? And, and that, that's my, my two cents. Thank you.
Our next one is Janelle Dobash.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I would like to say I'm also opposed to the reappointment of Mr. Postgate for the reasons everyone has already stated. The most glaring and obvious, of course, is the fact that some very critically important questions were not asked that directly affect all of these people. It took me about five minutes to Google and find out a lot of the serious effects of this aluminum plant. And I wasn't seeing in the minutes from that meeting, any of that really asked or discussed. So for that reason, I would oppose the reappointment. I'd also ask that, um, for the future, I think you're going to get a lot more interest in people serving on the Planning and Zoning. I know they're volunteers, and people have said it's hard to, to get volunteers. Um, but I, I really think you'll have some people stepping up to do that. I would ask that the criteria and qualifications required to serve are made known, and that your process for evaluating, interviewing, and appointing replacements for the Planning and Zoning Commission are also transparent and known, so that you can, you know, maybe get more applicants for screening. That's it. Thank you.
Um, next we have the city manager's report. Mr. Volker.
Honorable Mayor and Council, next council meeting will be Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM here at the Benson Council Chancellors. Talk a little bit about some adult activities. Recreation Center will host Bingo on Mondays at one PM. The doors open at noon. Wednesdays is Tai Chi, which is three forty-five to four forty-five. And then Fridays Lunchtime Connect, which is eleven o'clock to one PM. Last Friday, we did have a record amount of seniors that did come to Lunchtime Connect of a hundred and seventeen. And I appreciate all the sponsors and the dedicated city workers and volunteers that come out and help for Lunchtime Connect. Wednesday, July twenty-third, Benson Unified School District resumes classes. Make sure you reduce your speed when traveling through the school zones, be aware of, and beware of an unusually high concentration of pedestrians. Look out for buses, and please obey the crossing guards. Saturday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, is the Lantern Festival, which is three PM to eight PM at the San Pedro Golf Course. Come hang out, come hang out with us for the breathtaking Lantern Festival, where music, dancing, merchandise, arts and crafts, food and beverage vendors, and a great slash free kid zone with complimentary face painting, a balloon twister, and a climbing wall and more. When, when time is just right, we will light the sky with our hopes, highest hopes, deepest desires, and fondest memories. Mark milestones, set goals, or celebrate the life of a loved one in heaven. We invite you to experience the enchantment as the night sky is lit up by the warm glow of hundreds of lanterns, carrying messages of hope, love, happiness, and peace. Tonight you will never forget. Get your tickets today to share this moment, it's a moment you'll never forget. Ticket package, packages start at nineteen dollars. Five and under are free. Tickets and more information are available at the city's website, bencena-z.gov, or on Facebook at the Lantern Festival hyphen Benson, Arizona. Also, I want to mention same day, September twentieth, earlier in the daytime, Benson Clean and Beautiful Classic Cars Off Main will be held at Lyons Park. There'll be food, vendors, and a live DJ playing music. For information, you can contact Cindy Allen or bencencandbecleanandbeautiful@gmail.com. I do want to thank some of the city employees for the road refinishing projects they have been, been working on this, this past summer. Lyons Park is scheduled to be completed with the updates in August. And also want to mention that we'll have the visitor center, which begin to be painted within the next month. And our billing department has moved to the back room at the library, and they are open for business. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Onto new business. And next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that. I have a motion by Councilwoman Tapia to approve the consent agenda seconded by Councilmember Maldonado. Mr. Hayes?
Hi. No.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three to two. Onto... Item number two. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. All right, we're on to new agenda item number two. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance six-three-seven levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Benson, Arizona. Subject of taxation and certain sum upon each one hundred dollars of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget. Ms. Moreno.
Yes, Vice Mayor Johnson and Council. I would like to first bring up the reason why we have to address the property tax levy every year. So, um, there is a state statute that requires that we adopt a new rate or levy each year. So your valuations of your home are, are done through the county, through the county assessor's office. And then the Property Tax Oversight Commission gives us a levy limit worksheet every year that tells us what our maximum levy can be. Using that worksheet, we look at what our addition, what our current property tax levy rate is, and then we see what rate we need to adjust it to based on increased valuations of homes. And it also takes into account and tells us what new construction has been added to our property tax rolls. So based on all of that information, we typically, the, the process has been for the city that we go through the entire process to allow you the opportunity to adopt the maximum allowable levy as given to us through that levy limit worksheet. We post the required notices online, we do truth and taxation notices in the local newspaper, and, uh, and then we also have a public hearing. So the property tax ordinance is adopted annually no earlier than fourteen days following the council's adoption of the budget for the next fiscal year. The levy proposed upon each one hundred dollars of assessed value of all property, both real and personal, within the corporate limits... within the corporate limits of the city of Benson, except such property taxes may be exempt from law, exempt by law from taxation, is a tax rate of point eight seven six seven cents per hundred dollars of the assessed value of all real and personal property tax in the city of Benson, subject to taxation. Such sum to be set aside and used for the general fund. We held a public hearing on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. With the proposed tax levy rate of point eight seven six seven, a home valued at one hundred thousand dollars would pay eighty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents a year, or seven dollars and thirty-one cents a month. It's important to note that the city is a small portion of the total property taxes that get paid to the county each year. The vast majority of each tax bill goes to support the Benson School District, Cochise College, and Cochise County. We are seven point eight five percent of the total tax bill. As this tax levy ordinance is an administrative method of setting apart funds necessary for use and maintenance, it does not require an extraordinary three-fourths vote to make it effective immediately. This determination is based on a Supreme Court decision and is fully explained in the municipal budget and financial manual provided by the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. I also want to bring to your attention again the memo given as well with the blue sheet. And I usually in our memo lay out three options. In, in prior years, there's always been three options. One of those would be what, leaving the rate the same as it currently is. Uh, decreasing the rate so that the amount of taxes paid by every citizen would stay the same. And then the third option is always the maximum allowable levy and whatever rate that would be. This year, you'll notice that there are only two rates presented. The reason for that is the current rate that we have is too high based on that levy limit calculation that, that I said, I addressed earlier that we get. If we were to keep our levy rate the same, because values of homes have gone up so much, then our levy would increase above the maximum limit. So our only two choices are to reduce that rate. So the focus is more on the levy total amount, not necessarily the rate. So we look at how much we can levy in total and then what rate needs to be set for us to get there. So opt, so our current property tax levy for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is four hundred three thousand dollars, nine hundred forty-nine dollars. I spelled that wrong. Sorry. Four hundred and three, nine hundred forty-nine dollars. It is a rate of point nine two two four. Option one would be to decrease the levy rate to point eight five nine five per hundred dollars of assessed value. This option would equate to homeowners paying the same property tax rate as the prior fiscal year. The city's overall levy collection would still increase by eleven thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars for a total of four hundred fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The increase is due to new construction that was added to the city over the past year, which is over one point three million dollars in new construction that got added to our property tax rolls. So that's why we can keep the, the amount that citizens pay the same, but we would still see an increase in our overall levy. Um, option two is to adopt the maximum levy. This rate would be point eight seven six seven per hundred dollars of assessed value. Statue allows us to increase by two percent each year. This option would still decrease the rate, but it would increase our levy amount to that maximum two percent. The city, oh, city's overall levy would increase by nineteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars for a total of four hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. This would equate to an increase of a dollar seventy-two for a year for a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Also fourteen cents a month. Uh, the maximum allowable levy is what was presented in the final budget. However, it is council's pleasure to adopt the final rate. I have also included a screenshot of a property tax bill so that you can, uh, and this is from a city of Benson resident, so that you can see the amounts listed and the portions that go. So sometimes, uh, property tax can be misconstrued that we're raising taxes and that raises the entire amount and everything collected on a tax bill comes to the city, which is, which is not true. There are many people that charge a tax rate and we're all a piece of the pie. So on your memo, you can see that the city of Benson is the blue piece of the pie. And we're about seven point eight five percent of the total tax bill. It is staff's recommendation to, that council would adopt the maximum levy rate of point eight seven six seven.
Right, it's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, six-three-seven using option one.
I second for option one. So I have a motion by Councilmember Boyle and seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve ordinance six-thirty-one, option one. Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes five to zero. Onto new agenda item number three. Discussion and possible action regarding a request from Benson Clean and Beautiful for financial and or services support of the Classic Cars Off Main event to be held September twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Volker.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Council. Benson Clean and Beautiful, five oh one C three public charities holding their classic, the fall, Classic Cars Off Main Car Show on Saturday, September twentieth, twenty-five, twenty-five at Lyons Park. As well, Benson Clean and Beautiful would like to request the sponsorship funding in the amount of three thousand dollars to assist with the promotion of the city of Benson during their event and the waiting in park fees and, and providing city services for the event. The approved city of Benson twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget has the sponsorship currently allocated into funding. This event has attracted many, has attracted many visitors to Benson the years it has been held. And the Benson Clean and Beautiful hopes that by scheduling the event on the same day as the Lantern Festival, the, the two events will give our community the ability to attend two wonderful community events on the same day and attract more visitors. And if needed, a representative from Benson Clean and Beautiful will be available for any questions. And I do recommend the sponsorship.
And I do believe Ms. Cindy Allen is here if we need to ask her any questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's open for discussion.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've heard nothing but positive things about this event and we've sponsored it in the past. And I see that we have, uh, three thousand dollar request. I'd like to know if we can raise it to four thousand.
Okay.
Uh, question for Cindy. Do you feel like the four thousand is needed or is the three thousand enough?
The four thousand dollars would be extremely helpful. As you know, we just suffered a huge loss with the loss of Doug Quarles. And so that has put our, our, uh, mural project on hold for right now while we submit applications, accept applications for a new muralist. Doug was always extremely generous in what he charged us. And now we have no idea what these murals are gonna cost. We do our best to apply for grants. We could apply for five thousand and we could get one thousand. So any additional funds go in and every single bit goes towards murals. None of us take a pay. We're all volunteers. We have very minimal expenses. So the additional would also help with, uh, allowing us to do more advertising for the car show.
Uh, Cindy, I, I'm unaware. Did our, did our painter pass away or did he move away or what happened?
Yes, um, Doug passed away suddenly on June thirtieth from, uh, complications from colon cancer. Thank you. We didn't know it wasn't as well-known as it was. The memorial service was last Monday night at the B F W. And it's today in Louisiana. Sharon's there and he's being interred in the, his family plot in Jonesboro, Louisiana.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a question for Megan. Megan, so we have three thousand allotted on the budget, correct? Or don't we normally have them put in there somehow?
Yes, Councilmember Tapia, they are allotted in the budget and it's four thousand in the budget?
Um, okay. Four thousand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to recommend authorizing city services, uh, and sponsorship for the, uh, total price of four thousand dollars.
I second that motion. We have a motion by Councilmember Boyle and seconded by Councilmember Hayes to recommend, recommending authorizing city services and sponsorship of four thousand dollars. Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
To new business item number four. Discussion and possible action regarding the Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and the city of Benson. Mr. Volker.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Council. On Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the city of Sierra Vista City Council approved the intergovernmental agreement supporting the operations of the Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council. The I G A was approved by the Board of Supervisors for Cochise County on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Besides Cochise County and the city of Sierra Vista, also including the agreement of the city of Bisbee, the city of Douglas, the city of Wilcox, and the city of Benson. Attached to the packet is a cover letter, the original intergovernmental agreement, which is actually two for processing purposes, and a steering committee PowerPoint. Our continued partnership and support of Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council will continue to support the city of Benson and its surrounding attractions today and into the future. And we do recommend approval of the Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and the city of Benson.
All right. And it is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, approve the intergovernmental agreement between, uh, Benson and the, uh, um, Cochise County.
I second that. I have a motion by Councilmember Boyle, seconded by Councilmember Maldonado for the recommended approval of the C C Tech. Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I think we can discuss it up.
Can you tell me, I, I know we have this here, but can you tell me the difference, the benefit that it gave us? Cause I know we had them, we went without them, and then we have them again. So can you give me some like highlights of, of?
The foundation is tourism and then advertising. So individuals do, do like to come to Tombstone, for instance, or do like to, to come to Sierra Vista. And in their advertising portfolio, they also advertise for the city of Benson. And we're kind of the gateway to San Pedro Valley. Individuals do come through Benson to get to other areas within Cochise County. And then us having an imprint of those advertising campaigns is also very helpful for people to say, well, maybe I could stop here to eat or I can get gas or look at Carstner Caverns or other, other events here in Benson itself. And then us having that advertisement is another, another advantage for us.
So I, I was looking, I know previously that, um, it showed like the increase in our tourism, increase in our numbers, et cetera, et cetera, where before we couldn't get that information.
Correct.
So, um, I just want to make sure that it's, everything like that is gonna continue.
Myself and the other, uh, I didn't interrupt you, I'm sorry. Uh, myself and the other city managers, we do sit on a panel, um, and we talk about these numbers to make sure that we are, I guess, making sure that we have the knowledge base, that our, our, our funds are being utilized for our advertisement purposes.
All right, thank you.
I'll restate the, the approval. So Cindy had stopped the, the ayes.
No, there was, there was a full vote.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So motion passes five zero. Onto new business item number five. And that would be the update on the strategic plan projects.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Council. On your sheet is listed some of our, our items on our strategic plan. I want to talk a little bit about our utility rate study, which we will be sending out a request for proposal to have a company complete that for us to make sure we do this legally and appropriately once that RFP is completed. We will send out the request for proposal for our utility rate study from a company to make sure that we follow the guidelines set up in the Arizona State statute for utility rate study. Also, we have looked at the utility, the golf course management. I know this last budget year, the golf course has asked for more capital funds. And we're working with, uh, a true management company to make sure those funds are properly utilized, properly spent to enhance the golf course, which would bring more tourists to the golf course. One other issue that we've noticed at the golf course has been the HVAC system, which has not been able to properly cool that system. Right now, the, the HVAC consultant that we utilized has determined there's a blower issue that may be cost-saving as well. But that is a, an important fact by bringing in an expert, an HVAC expert to look at the blower system to make sure that we can properly cool the golf course, um, building structure and so forth that houses the Benson City Grill. We're still looking at evaluating the skill-based pay system for the public works utility workers. Last council meeting, I actually have mentioned the twenty-three public works individuals that had increased their certification levels, which is not something that has not been done in public works in a while. And from, with that is a skill-based appropriation. So if they hit, for instance, if they get a C D L, they get certified in certain levels for, for wastewater or for water or for gas management, then their salaries do increase based upon their skill levels. And increasing their skill levels increases the amount of time they, they take to, or decreases the amount of time that they take to, to provide service to the community and then also is a cost-saving measure by their expertise that they have developed. Beginning in September this year, talking about leadership development, thirteen city employees will be attending a once-a-week, four-month training course for supervisors. This course is gonna be held in Benson. Uh, last year, we went to, to Wilcox, which then put a lot more time on the road. But this time, this, this course will be held in Benson. And I'm excited for members of our, of our city staff that want to get to attain the supervisor training. At Benson, Lyons Park, it's, it is expected to be completed in August of this year. And that is from State Parks Grant and also a C B D G grant. Also included in that this year, we were able to include four pickleball courts, which is something that will also be completed at the same time. Twenty twenty-six for the airport, the F A A and A dot have been looking at funding um, to increase, to actually look at building a terminal building at our airport and do some tarmac improvements. The cost behind for this for the city of Benson will be about five percent. The rest will be, be covered by F A A and by A dot. And also we're looking at updating the airport master plan. And unless anybody has any questions, that's the conclusion of my report.
So Chief, I have to ask you, um, you said it'd be completed in, in August. Tell me about the ball field. Will ball field have turf or is it just gonna be grass and wait, we'll have to just wait till next season or whenever we have the grass field available?
So the, the, the softball field, the turf that will be on the softball field should be in place when, when it's opened so we can begin to play on it right now. And not only did the, the contractor that we hired to build this court also, um, not only is he laying, laying the field and laying the turf as well, but it was also part of the teaching process for our parks and recreation people to learn how to take this, this turf, regrow this turf and make sure that we continue to have the same turf that's put in. That was another, another portion.
Tune to attend our meetings. Sorry about that. So I had asked Tune to attend our meetings and I know they hadn't because we had a new, a local management transition.
Right.
But I am expecting them to attend so that we can ask questions and so that we can, they can be a better partner to us as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to make sure that that is still known.
Yes, ma'am.
And then to have a meeting with the local as well.
Understood.
Onto new item number six. Discussion during and or after a presentation by city staff of city finances with emphasis on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and the city's fin- and the city's financial position on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. All revenues and expenses of the city may be discussed. Ms. Moreno.
Yes, Vice Mayor and Counsel. For some reason, earlier, your screens weren't working when I switched to HDMI. So I apologize if they're not going to work for you tonight. The report and the presentation are printed for you, and I did pass that out before the meeting so you can follow along. And as it was not included in the packet this month, I just want to make a note that the financial reports are also, these reports are also available on the city's website under the Finance Department's page. So all financial reports in prior months are available. Okay, all right, tonight, we are going to look at the city's financial position as of May thirty-first. We're going to compare this fiscal year to the prior fiscal year. And again, figures are unaudited and subject to change. As of May, we're ninety-two percent of the fiscal year done. So we only have one more month to go for presentation purposes. We're already done with the fiscal year, right? We've started the new fiscal year. So as of May, on the revenue side, let's start there. For the month of May, we brought in citywide. So citywide, again, this includes general fund, it includes all of our enterprise funds, it includes our grants fund, capital projects fund. Everything put together, we saw an increase, we saw an increase, that says decrease, I apologize. We saw an increase of just shy of a million dollars. So we brought in two point seven million dollars. A big reason for this is that in the month of May, we actually were able to secure some of our grant reimbursements that we have been waiting for. So one of the big chunks of funds that were spent was for the SCBA's for our fire department. And that was a regional grant that Keith had secured. And it was for our fire department, but also for a couple area fire departments. And that was over six hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement that we were able to receive back from FEMA. On the year-to-date side, so this is taking all the way from July up until the end of May, the city has brought in just over twenty million dollars, and this is an increase of one point five million over the prior fiscal year. On the expense side, you can see for the month of May, the expenses citywide, so again, all funds, all departments, this is two point three million dollars. This is an increase over the prior year of just over nine hundred thousand dollars. Year-to-date, the expenses for the city are over seven million, seventeen million, as opposed to the prior fiscal year of thirteen million. So this is an increase of over three million dollars. Net position, net position is where we just look at the revenues that we're bringing in and the money that we have been spending. And for the month of May, we had a positive, a positive net position of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And year-to-date, citywide, the net position is two point seven million dollars. So this is, this is lower than it was in the prior fiscal year. So you can see it's a decrease in the net position of about one point seven million. This is because we have been spending more money on projects. And some of those big projects being the improvements at Lions Park. So we've got budgeted two million dollars for that. We added the pickleball court, so we're spending, we're spending a good chunk of money on that. Of course, the majority of that is going to be refunded back to us through our grant reimbursements. But that is, that still shows up on that expense side. And we've been spending more money on some, some street maintenance. So you guys have seen that, and city manager has also reported on that. So, but at the end of the day, we're still at a positive net position citywide. Okay, moving on to the sales tax. This is our doughnut chart that just shows sales tax by category. And you can see, just like I've presented every month, that the biggest chunk of our local sales tax that we do collect comes from retail. So this is retail and use tax, so those online purchases as well that we receive our sales tax funds from. So forty-six percent of May collections came from retail and twenty-three percent came from food tax. For year-to-date, those figures are very similar, forty-five percent coming from retail and twenty-two percent coming from food tax. Looking at our total TPT, TPT is Transaction Privilege Tax. It's just another term that Arizona uses for sales tax. Total TPT collected in May was seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. This is an increase over the prior fiscal year of about forty-six thousand dollars. And I will just hover, if I can get my mouse over here. Did it go? We're in May, right here, and you're going to want to be looking at the dark blue line. No, I'm sorry, the light blue line, this one right there. There, okay. Bed tax collections, so bed tax collections is our hotel motel tax. It's an additional tax on short-term stays, under thirty days. For the month of May, we collected six thousand one hundred ninety dollars. This is a decrease of about eight hundred dollars from the prior fiscal year, from the prior May. Construction sales tax. Construction sales tax is a, we treat these as one-time funds because they depend on the construction going on within the city. And we put these funds aside in our capital projects fund, and those help us to pay for things like the street paving that was just done on Union and down by Lions Park. Construction sales tax for May was one hundred and five thousand dollars. Year-to-date, we have collected nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which this year's budget was only five hundred thousand dollars. So we have definitely blown our budget in a good way on construction sales tax. So that money is set aside, and what is not used by the end of the fiscal year will roll over to help us fund projects in the next fiscal year. Food tax collections for the month of May was a hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. This is an increase of about twenty-five thousand dollars over the prior fiscal year. Again, this is one of our most stable revenue sources for the city. Retail and use tax collection, this is our largest portion that we receive in our sales tax. For May, it was three hundred and five thousand, and this is an increase of about thirteen thousand over the prior fiscal year. And lastly, we have our restaurant and bar tax, collected for May was just over seventy thousand dollars. And this is the second month in a row that we have seen a significant increase over the prior fiscal year. And collections typically tend to be around fifty to sixty thousand dollars a month, whereas these last two months, we've been in the seventy thousand. So we're seeing some activity in our restaurant and bar, which is good. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Megan. And next, we're going on to call to the public. We've got a big stack here, so I ask that we please keep the three minutes. And of course, city council is unable to address the speaker. The first one is going to be, is it Mica Lee? Set on.
All right. This is where we all live. Just because you don't live within city limits doesn't mean you're not affected by the city's actions and what goes on in the surrounding communities. Everyone is for jobs in our community. Nobody's against them. But most people commute and others do what they can locally. Just because there's ninety jobs that are going to be created, that doesn't mean that the locals are going to be qualified to hold those jobs. So therefore, they're going to be brought, people are going to be brought in from the outside area, or they're going to be contracted out by the company. The biggest issue here is the water with ADI trying to come in. The City of Benson in two thousand and twenty-four used five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, or sorry, five hundred and fifty-nine acre feet of water. For those of you who don't know, that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one gallons. That's enough water to cover one acre of ground, forty-three thousand, five hundred sixty cubic feet, one foot deep. According to an ADI employee, the cooling towers hold eighty thousand gallons, two percent evaporation rate. Cooling tower is the least effective way to cool anything. That math comes out to two thousand, five hundred and eighty acre feet of water a year. That is four point six times what the City of Benson used in two thousand and twenty-four. It's also been reported by ADI that they claim to use three hundred gallons a minute, with a hundred and fifty of that going back to the wastewater treatment plant in Benson. That's a continuous use of a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. At that number, you're still talking about a usage of two hundred and forty-two acre feet of water. That's roughly forty-three percent of what the city uses on an annual basis. That leads me to a series of questions that I believe everybody in this room deserves answers to. How much water does ADI actually intend to use? Where will the refused water go, and will it be free of contaminants? Who wrote the Community Development News piece in your packet on page one forty-nine dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five? And it's also posted on the city's website. Usually, pieces have an author or an originator. That one does not. What would cause the city to say no and stop the ADI project? How much money has been invested by the city to assist this ADI project? How much money is the city planning to spend to support the ADI project in an ongoing basis? Are there any waivers or incentives offered or provided for the ADI project? Exactly what permissions have been granted by the city to whom and when pertaining to ADI? And how much did the city pay for contract services to recommend this project? Who proposed and supported the ADI venture? Where did the ADI idea come from? Is our fire department properly equipped and staffed to respond to an emergency at a facility such as this? And the conditional use permit to ADI was recommended on three conditions: traffic study, emergency response plan, and water conservation. Has the city received an update on any of these conditions? I want to let the record show that I'll pass out these questions to the council members. And the members of this community deserve some answers. Ultimately, the decision affects us all, politicians, members of the city, and members of the community alike.
Next speaker, we have Ms. Joanne Cousins.
Hello. I spoke to you at the last council meeting. I think I was perhaps the first person to speak to you about this aluminum dynamics project. I had learned about it six weeks ago, just from something someone posted online. I was like, this is happening? I hadn't heard anything about it. I started researching very quickly, found the two hundred, no, the one hundred and ninety-three-page application for the Title V eight from ADQ, couldn't understand it. So I started researching for people that helped me understand it. And I came across two people, and one of them was Stephen Brittle, who's been fighting environmental issues in Arizona since nineteen ninety. He understands these things. And he reviewed that and said, wow, this is not a good idea for Benson. I'll write the city councilor's an email. So when I spoke to you five weeks ago, I was encouraging you to read that email and his analysis. So he has been doing this work for thirty-five years, and this is a quote from one of his emails. He said, "This would be one of the most polluting facilities in terms of toxics and risks that we have ever seen." So that's after doing thirty-five years of environmental care in Arizona. And I'm pleased to say that I confirmed with him today, they have, he and his people really know what they're doing. They're, they're, thinks this is a really bad idea, and they've never lost a lawsuit in their thirty-five years because they get their details really accurate. And so since I spoke to you five weeks ago, at that point, I thought, actually, this project had to go through the city council. Then I learned that it didn't. And then I learned that it happened in the P and Z. And then I went and I looked at the minutes of the P and Z, and I saw that there was no questions, there were no discussions. Then I went to the minutes of the so-called community, you know, awareness meeting. Have some friends that attended that. And in that meeting, there were only twenty people, and probably at least five of them were staff, you know? So clearly, the word didn't get out. And that's why now, if you turn around and look, we've all become aware of this in the last five weeks. And obviously, people by and large are not happy about it. So I, I'm, in that community meeting, the president of aluminum dynamics was asked, what's going to come out of your stacks? And he lied. Now we know that he knew at that time that they were required to file this ADEQ Title V permit and that they couldn't even start to build their plant until they got that permit. And the only people required to file for that are companies that are going to be putting toxic stuff into the air. So what was his answer to what's going to come out of your stack from a community member? He said it was warm and clean. Warm and clean. He lied, he knowingly lied. So my request, and I think a lot of people in here would agree with me, is that we have another community meeting. And at that community meeting, we're not lied to, and we want to see, everybody's been doing a lot of research. So a lot of people are a lot more informed than what we were five weeks ago. And one of the things that's, that's really important is to really get the truth and have a chance to have another vote. Okay? I mean, that community meeting, they had to have it, it doesn't qualify. Twenty people came to that meeting? That tells you it wasn't adequately, it wasn't adequate notification, and then the president of the company lied. So, and the other quick request I would ask is those three reports that they had, the company had to submit to the city for their conditional approval. I was told two weeks ago by a city employee that you all had just received it, those three reports. I know multiple people that have asked for those reports, and as of today, I hadn't heard of anyone who received them. So as people that live and are going to be dramatically affected by this plant, we need to see those reports.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cousins, for your time. And next is Ms. Jessica Clowers.
Good evening. I would like to refer you to ARS Title Thirteen, Section eighteen oh four, under Open Meetings, Exceptions, Notices, Agenda, and Policy Statement. Arizona's Open Meeting Law mandates that the public bodies hold meetings that are open to the public, meaning the public has the right to attend, observe, and listen to the deliberations and proceedings of these bodies. A meeting defined as any gathering of a quorum of a public body where they discuss, propose, or take legal action. Violations of this law include discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda and taking legal action in closed session. Several online sources have stated this conditional permit, conditional use permit, sorry, for aluminum dynamics was voted on quietly in November. And there is no visible agenda available on the city website after the November sixth Planning and Zoning Meeting that can validate a public meeting was held by city council. Therefore, any permits or conditional use permits issued in closed meetings shall be considered null and void. Please also refer to ARS Title Nine, Section four six two dot oh four, Public Hearing Required. Please also refer to ARS Title nine, Section four six two dot oh four, Public Hearing Required. Aluminum Dynamics issued a public notice in the City of Sierra Vista newspaper, which is more than thirty miles away from Benson and can only be accessed with a paid subscription. The law states if there is no municipality, it should be posted on the affected property in such a manner to be legible from the public right-of-way and in at least ten public places in the municipality. As of Thursday, July tenth, no signs were visible anywhere on that property. Therefore, ADI is in violation of ARS nine dash four six two dot oh four, and any public notices issued outside the municipality of Benson, Arizona for ADI should be considered null and void. Aluminum Dynamics is currently breaking ground at the site with any conditional use permits posted on their grounds. If the city of Benson believes aluminum dynamics is so beneficial for our community, then why won't they talk about ADI on their social media page? Where they share all of their other great news. We, the people of Benson, are not ignorant, nor are we beneath any one of you who are sitting in these positions of power. Your authority does not give you permission to break the law. It's time to assume responsibility for your actions and remember that Benson is clean, Benson is beautiful, and we, the people, intend to keep it that way. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Kathleen Kenny Haynes.
Good evening, Kathleen Kenny Haynes, South Stellac, Tight Circle, Benson. Mr. Chairman or Vice Chairman?
Can't hear you.
Okay. Councilmembers. The proposed San Pedro site, thank you, thank you. The proposed San Pedro site for the aluminum dynamics plant is designated business park or industrial use by the Benson General Development Plan. Therefore, changing the current light industrial use to heavy industrial use is consistent with the zoning land use chart of the plan. However, to address some plan inconsistencies, it would be necessary to develop a gateway entry site along Highway eighty at the intersection of Fourth Street, maintain view sheds of the surrounding environment along Highway eighty, prevent contamination of groundwater, maintain the integrity of night sky viewing and the high-level air quality, minimize non-compatible land use activities near the San Pedro corridor, make preservation of all natural assets a consideration in the analysis of development approval, expand employment opportunity north of Interstate ten, and emphasize industrial growth in the airport vicinity. The appellate court decision in Haynes v. City of Phoenix requires any rezoning to be in basic harmony with the whole land use plan. Even if the above actions are taken, there are several other areas of the plan that need to be acted upon before, before basic harmony with the plan can be established. A zoning change of this kind at this time would result in a change to the plan of such significance as to impact the substantial portion of the city and its planning area. Consequently, a major plan amendment is necessary before zoning can be established. On the other hand, if this project is found feasible, the airport industrial park site, which fulfills the core, core needs of the project such as trucking, trucking and track availability and industrial use zoning, would not have these inconsistencies and disharmony with the plan that the San Pedro site has. There are many other issues, many other issues may arise from the proposed project, but by moving the project to the airport industrial park area, these inconsistencies with the plan could fly away, and the result could be a win-win for the community and the applicant. But if you don't put this heavy industrial usage development into the area that has been designed and planned for such use, you will have forever define the character of the city of Benson's historic downtown as nothing more than a gateway to an industrial recycling plant. Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Dan Sprinkle.
So as was said earlier, very eloquently by a fellow veteran of mine back there in the crowd, I want to reiterate what he said about the city Benson, of the Benson government works for the people. You serve the people, each and every one of you. We do not serve you. And as you saw last week, I'm sure all of you have not, I'm sure y'all saw the video last week in the inappropriate behavior on behalf of the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He fired the first salvo when he told a lady in the audience, "Good luck with that", when she said, "I'll just contact the district attorney's office." He set the stage, sorry, what?
Attorney General.
Attorney General, I'm sorry, Attorney General. He set the stage for the us versus them attitude. This is why we're angry, folks. This is why we are PO'd, and I'm trying to be polite here. It's that kind of behavior. We're angry also because of the covert nature, as has already been said, I'm not saying anything new here, of how ADI was brought into this city. It was brought in under the radar, just like when the Indianapolis Colts left Baltimore. They did it under the cover of night, and that city was mad. And that's why we're mad. You're bringing poison into our city, our area, beyond the city limits. You're taking our water, and we don't get a say in it. That's why we're angry, and that is not what your job is. Your job is to reflect what the people want, each and every one of you sitting around this room tonight. I also want to remind you that the Arizona Department of Commerce, in their handbook on page forty-two, says very clearly that Planning and Zoning Commissions are, quote, "advisory only." They do not set policy, they do not approve permits, they advise only. It goes on to say, and for the sake of time, I didn't print it all out or type it all out, but it does say that the only the elected body makes the permit approve. It was already mentioned about the general development plan, but I'm going to reiterate that too. If we go through with this ADI plan, we're violating the general development plan for Benson in regards to visual appeal, land use, and environmental planning. And again, with, I, I would take more than three minutes just to talk about where you're all going to violate that. So my question is, why do we waste paper and come up with a general development plan if the city government wants to bring in an entity, an industry, that is going to be contrary to that general development plan? And Mr. Volker had mentioned earlier two things about tourism. He mentioned about classic cars off Main Street. Do we really think we're going to attract tourists for classic cars when we have a monstrosity down at the Big Curve? He also mentioned about the golf course. Well, per ADI's permit request, they submitted to ADEQ, and I just read it again this morning, at least that page, and it says that gray water will be funneled off into the golf course. What's going to be in that gray water? We don't know yet, because again, we've been kept in the dark. We have no idea what's going to be brought into our city. So are tourists really going to want to come out there risking having children with two heads or no arms? We don't know what's going to be in that water. I know I'm exaggerating a little bit to make my point, but that's the whole, that's why we're mad. We're not getting information from you, and we're being lied to by ADI. And we're being trolled on social media trying to muddy the waters there. Last thing I want to bring up is announcements and meetings. It's twenty-first century, why can't we put these announcements on social media? I still use a flip phone, but I know how to use Facebook. I know how to use nextdoor.com. Cochise County makes announcements on nextdoor.com and Facebook. Why can't we? We're limited, you, you seem like we're only limited to just announcing in the newspaper in Sierra Vista and posting outside City Hall. Well, I didn't get a welcome board packet when I moved here that said, "In order to find out what's going on in the city of Benson, you must go down to City Hall every day and check what the latest is." Guess what? We all work, we don't have time for that. And I'm sorry, but it is modern times. Let's use social media, get the word out, or could that be why we don't want the word getting out? Because we want to do these little things like we're doing with ADI right now. Thank you.
Next we have Mitchell Hamilton, Ham, Ham, Hamlin, sorry. Michelle.
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, I was just thanking them. What I'd like to remind you of is that we all have a responsibility as human beings to manage and care for Earth, its resources, and all living creatures. I never in my wildest dreams thought me, a conservative Republican, would ever say those words or have to remind anybody, because I'm not some crazy environmentalist, or how I would view them. However, I'm a conservative and I believe in conservation, and that's where many of us have agreements. Who disagree politically, we absolutely agree on this. And that's what's beautiful here at this time, is many people that I would actually call friends, but we disagree in certain realms, but when it comes to the lives and safety of our loved ones and our community and caretaking and being good stewards of that, this is where we align a hundred percent, and I appreciate that. And I'm not even from this place, but God led us here. Two years ago, we moved here from the basin of Los Angeles. If everybody could just close your eyes and visualize the basin of Los Angeles, you will visualize refineries all over the place. SA Aluminum, who got sued, is in Wilmington, California, which was two miles from my home. Now, the side effects of health problems from these refineries that, throughout my life, I, I taught in LA Unified School District, mile away from these refineries and recycling plants and, and, and. And my students would have major migraines by eleven o'clock in the morning, and we wonder why. Now, this, this didn't happen overnight to Los Angeles. This took decades to simmer in the grounds and in the air of that beautiful, or what used to be beautiful place. Only miles from the Pacific Ocean, the port of LA, the port of Long Beach, Cabrillo Beach, the Korean Bell, Fort MacArthur, these historically are beautiful and historical landmarks, and it's been completely desecrated by irresponsible people, not of today, but of fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years ago. They didn't have the foresight to think about the future generations. You guys have the ability to do that, something they didn't do there. Hence the reason why my family is here. We were looking for a place that had pristine water. That was number one on our list when we moved. Pristine, well, I never heard of Cochise County in my life. But God had a bigger plan for us, and it was here. And we found that pristine water in our aquifers, which are ancient and have been protected forever until now. So I ask you, do you want this beautiful place, the San Pedro Valley, to turn into the Los Angeles basin? You really don't, because if I stood here and listed all of the health problems that close friends and family of mine have, you would be absolutely mortified. And that is not what we want for here. This is why my husband and I and our two children are here to build a legacy in this community and fight against all of the evil that was done there, so it doesn't happen here. And what I'm encouraged by is by all the people behind me. We left a community that was asleep, unfortunately, but we came to a community who is absolutely awake. They're willing to put the legwork into the, looking at everything, researching everything, asking questions, and, uh, questions, questions, and pushing against things that they know are not, not just wrong, they're morally wrong. So I ask you guys, please reconsider. We're going to challenge it all the way, because this is a hill I will die on, because my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, observe it. So, we are not moving again. This is home, and we absolutely love it, and we're encouraged by everybody in this town, because they are absolutely beautiful people. Thank you so much, have a fabulous evening.
Ms. Aubrey Chapman.
Before I share what I would like to say, I have a friend who wasn't able to make it tonight, and I'd like to read something that she wrote. She said, "My name is Audrey Bitigan, and I am here to voice my concerns for the aluminum plant project. I would like to start off by reading from the City of Benson General Development Plan, specifically land and use policy design sticks, which reads as follows: Maintain the view sheds and dynamic visual appeal of the city's surrounding environment. This can be achieved by designating certain structures of roadway to be free of large commercial signs and billboards. It's interesting to me that the city is concerned about billboards and commercial signs disrupting the visual appeal of the city. However, the city is now willing to place a massive aluminum plant with cooling towers reaching one hundred feet in the air that will release toxins into the community. That seems like quite a contradiction to me. Not only will the aluminum plant produce toxins that are released into our community, but the plant is placed close to residential area, right next to the San Pedro River, and even more alarming, a short distance from our schools. How is this not a concern for the deciding officials? Please do not sell out this town. You are allowing this greedy company to hold this town hostage. This is a bad idea, and please rethink your actions before it's too late. Surely there are other job opportunities that can be brought to Benson besides a smelter. Do the right thing." I would like to add that I am one of the few who was born in Benson. I have lived in Benson most of my life. I grew up in the house that my great-grandfather built. I have five kids, kids who all attend school at Benson, in the primary school, middle school, and high school. I teach it and coach at the high school. I have strong ties to this town, and I love this town, and I just want it to continue to be a wonderful, beautiful, safe, healthy place to raise kids, especially my kids. Thank you.
Next we have Ms. Kristin Bitigan.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening. Having grown up in a Phoenix suburb and now having lived in Benson for ten years, I feel as if I have an even deeper understanding of just how special Benson truly is. This is an absolute beautiful area to reside in, and it should be treasured. I am not opposed to growth, but I do feel strongly that the growth should be responsible and appropriate.
Yes.
It should not be a heavy industrial harmful business on top of our river, on top of our schools, and on top of our homes. It should not be an industrial business with a horrendous rap sheet of air and water violations. You were told warm air, but clean air. Did anyone stop and do their homework here? Or do we skip that step if the price is right?
Yeah.
I know we are unable to provide an oral response for any of us now, but look at all these people here, look at the signs, we want answers. I have a simple list here of ten questions that I would like for the council to answer. I'm providing you with a written copy of these inquiries, and I will be expecting a response from the city in writing starting tomorrow. I will be sure to email your city clerk a copy as well. Number one, whose idea was this plant? Who proposed it or introduced it, and who are the primary supporters of it? Number two, what incentives have been offered or provided to the city of Benson? Number three, what permissions have been granted by the- Number three, what permissions have been granted by the city council? The mayor, and you specifically, and when were these actions taken? Number four, to date, how much has the city of Benson invested in supporting this initiative and project? Number five, what are the projected startup and ongoing support costs for this business? Six, to date, how much has the city paid for the contract services of Christine McLaughlin? How much was spent to use her as a contract planner on this project? Seven, what would cause the city council to say no and stop this project? Eight, what amount of water will be used daily? Gallons per day? Number nine, where would the wastewater go and how will that process work? And our final question, number 10. Who authored this community development news piece in your council packet? The one that says "when approved, not if approved." Let the record show that I'm providing you a hard copy of these 10 questions. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your timely response.
Next speaker is Dom- Dominic.
Good evening. I'm gonna read off my phone here. I'm 28 years old, and I'd say I'm probably the youngest person to speak today. Uh, I'm a U.S. Army veteran who recently moved to Benson. I was born and raised in Tucson and met my wife here. We have four children, and we recently just purchased a home here. We recently just purchased a home here in Benson, less than a mile away from the proposed site. I'm very concerned with the lack of communication and transparency from the city in regards to ADI. In a quarter of a century, the parent company has committed nearly 100 offenses totaling in over $11 million in fines. The plant that's proposed would be classified as a major source of hazardous air pollutants. They're requesting a Class 1 permit, Title V ADEC permit. Pollutants emitted from this process include nearly a, at a hun- near or at 100 tons annually of 10 different types of particulate matter. The plant would run 24/7/365, right here within city limits, next to homes, schools, et cetera. So far, it's unclear in the amount of municipal water that will be used daily. Some of it apparently will be recycled back into the golf course. Seventy, 74 trucks daily, processing 300,000 tons of aluminum. The 88-foot main, 88-foot tall main structure with taller structures around it. It's proposed to be built right on the San Pedro River, which was, which was one of the last undammed, free-flowing, free-flowing rivers in the West. It flows into the Gila and the rest of Arizona, and as an avid hunter, it feeds my family. The company is currently in a $50 million litigation with the last town they tried to set up in. Is this really what we want, to bring to our small town of around 5,000 people? There's already a petition going around with over 1,500 people that have signed, and that's a lot more than the Citizens Review that was held only asking seven people. This needs to be recalled, reevaluated, and revoted on.
Yeah.
In another quarter century, this would be a problem that my children and I will have to deal with, and most of the people here won't be here anymore. You guys need to think about the future of Benson. That's all I have to say.
Shidee? With the, with the Huachica Astronomy Club?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes.
Good, good. Uh, as you can see, I'm the only Asian face in this room, and I struggle so hard at my English Speech 101 class. The fear that speak in public kills me, but the fear that Benson and its citizens that lose this beautiful environment overweight my fear. So I'm here today and facing all of you, and, uh, I'm here to read something my husband wrote. Uh, he's concerned, in addition to all the environmental issues, he also concerned about light pollution. Uh, because both of us are on the Huachica Astronomy Club, and we moved here from Chicago area. And we lived there, he lived there for 30 years, I'm 22 years. Originally, I came from China, the communist China, and my homeland, as you know, is the second economic power in the world. Its land, soil, water is so heavily contaminated. There's people die young from cancer, et cetera. And it's a major concern, and the government don't talk about it. And I feel it is so sad. I see the same thing happen here and in a little rural town I've never found on the map. And my hometown is 8 million citizens. And I would never come to this place if not for the clear water, the dark sky, the beautiful galaxy, the Milky Way across our head every night. You guys are so blessed by the nature wells that are given by your God. So I, actually, I'm not reading the draft my husband draft, uh, wrote. I just speak out of my mind. And in 1998, actually on September 11th, I boarded the flight came to the U.S. I can, if this town is destroyed, I can move, I can go somewhere else. But I feel sad for all of you, you Americans that were born and raised in this blessed land, but you ruined it. I think it's everybody's responsibility. I'm, I'm a naturalized citizen, and I am so happy that I'm here, and I, I'm a new face, I'm a, um, I, I, I don't have any friends here because I, I'm new into this town, uh, but I really, really call to your conscience that pre- preserve the way of life that you are given by God. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Kimberly Skolken.
I also have a fear of public speaking, but this was too important to let go. Hello, my name is Kimberly Skolken. I live on the other side of the San Pedro River, across from the proposed plant, less than a mile is the crow flies. My property actually includes a portion of the land behind the plant, as well as a piece of the river in between. If ADI starts operations there, not only with aluminum dust raining down on my property, but my portion of the river, my animals, and my children, when it rains, the toxic runoff will run from behind my plant and from my property directly into the river and head north. You see, both my home and the site chosen by Aluminum Dynamics are flood zones, registered flood zones. In addition, what doesn't runoff in the gentler winter rains will sink into the ground. Due to the convenient location of my property being right off the river, my well that we drink from and bathe in is only 100 feet deep. How long before I and my children experience the effects of toxins on them, from the emissions, in them, from inhaling them, and in their drinking water? We raise and butcher our own animals on our little homestead. How soon before the beef I raise for my family tests at toxic levels for aluminum and carcinogens? How long before our home-raised dairy products do as well? We already have a cancer cluster in St. David due to Apache powder. They had to dig everyone-new wells a number of years back, and I still lost five friends afterwards. In addition, I just finished fighting with the Department of Justice and seven tribes and several ecological agencies for water restitution, which I have been told will be revisited in the future for my domestic well. Not only has the city of Benson not completed that process, why would they guarantee water that may not last, and they have not established their own rights to? In addition, residents in the J-6 area have recently received notice that they are being dropped from their homeowners insurance due to the high fire risk in this drought-stricken southwest desert. Aluminum dust is flammable, so flammable in fact that if ADI has granted their ADEQ Title V permit, they have to create a fire disaster plan that's given to our local fire departments. Our local fire departments are volunteers. Why would we risk a plant to be built in a high-risk area, low on water, with voluntary firefighters? What's Aluminum Dynamics gonna say if some of our local men are hurt or killed in a fire, which they have a history of having? I'm sorry? Finally, I keep hearing about the jobs that this will bring. In construction, perhaps, but not one large construction project, even for the city of Benson, has hired local contractors, not one! And we have many hard-working local contractors here. We do not have an abundance of workers with two-year degrees and the skills for the plant. It will be a long time coming before this company can make a dent in our local unemployment. Never mind that we do have a population here, that just won't work. There are actually jobs. They may not be great, but they're better than nothing. But even if this dream of jobs did pan out, who in their right mind, with children or grandchildren growing this community, wants to sell off their health for more job availability? Who in their right mind would trade the water that their community needs to survive for more jobs? And who had the bright idea to put such a plant alongside an endangered river, in a flood zone, on a riparian area, across from a nursing home, and a mile from a school?
Next, we have Ms. Scott- Scotty Drum.
Thank you, council and the mayor and everyone in Benson.
Hello, Scotty.
I'm trying to make this short. I'm another one who doesn't like doing public speaking, but here we go. My name is Scott Drum. My family has served America, Ireland, and Scotland in both war and peacetime to defend, protect, stop tyranny, injustice, and corruption since 1746, ending with myself serving our great nation in 1988. I took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and to protect all our rights and our freedoms under that great intonations document. This plant is the enemy. I'm not against change or economic growth. I'm for small businesses and the opportunity for all to succeed and grow environmentally and intelligently in a sound manner. What I am against is proven toxic industry destroying the water, soil, air, and protected areas like the river and the aquifers here. I witnessed the destruction of waterways in the environment in Colorado mining areas in New Mexico, Arizona, and Wyoming over the past 36 years. And now Benson is on that destruction list stemming from greed, political and legal discrepancies, and a billion-dollar toxic facility blowing smoke up our skirts. Brief examples: 2015 Gold King Mine, Colorado, three mil- three million gallons of toxic water with lead, arsenic, and cyanide, and fentanyl poured into the Anam- Anamis River, toxic waste into Colorado, New Mexico, Utah waters, and Navajo Nation's water. 1940 to 1970 GE port PCBs, a chemical used to cool transformers, industrial electrical supplies. 1.3 million pounds of toxic chemicals that contaminated 200 miles of the Lower Hudson River in New York State. 1920s to the 1980s, Upper State New York, acid rain from the smelting of metal, recycling metals from the smokestacks of these places putting out nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, creating acids in the air, killing all the flora and fauna around the state and the source of the, source of the Hudson River. The list could go on and on. I took from the Center of Biological Diversity Tucson letter to the city, uh, to the mayor and the council planning commission, these are just a few concerns. Approximately 52 tons of toxic aluminum dust will cover Benson over the next 10-year period, contaminating air, water, soil, destroying federally-protected wildlife habitats along the river, violating federal protection laws. Aluminum dust mixed with the air is highly explosive and flammable. It is a Level 4 danger under OSHA regulations. And I hope this number is wrong. I don't think so. From this letter, I'm assuming I meant 2,627,400, uh, 2,627,400,000 gallons of water we pulled per year from Benson well and water supplies. And it's two miles from your school. I want this sinking to you all. On September 27, 1779, enabled battle at Flambor Head on the sinking, burning, undergunned American warship, the British demanded Captain John Paul Jones to surrender. His response among the flames, explosion, and his ship and his crew fighting val- responded, valiantly responded, "I have not yet begun to fight." To the council, mayor, planning commission, the toxic invaders to our county, our town, our state, we have not yet begun to fight. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel Arnold.
Evening, council people. My name is Daniel Arnold, I'm native Cochise County, president of Benson. Uh, we are the neighbor to Aluminum Dynamics. We own the old golf course.
Can't hear you.
Do we own the old golf course? We have shut that golf course down. Uh, it used 850,000 gallons of water a year, a day. So, we started to do our part. I represent Dan Arnold and Associates. I'm a real estate development consultant. Uh, I work for over 30 clients in the state area, and I deal with over 100 agencies, cities, and towns. Our job is to analyze projects like this one. Um, I also represent the Cherokee Apache Indian Nation. I'm a Cherokee Apache Indian member. I sit on tribal council. I'm director of Cherokee Apache Economic Development. I'm president of Cherokee Apache Development, and I'm president of Cherokee Apache Water Company. We took all the information from this project that we were able to get, which was most of it. We ran all this information past our team of engineers, scientists, environmentalists, hydrologists, um, economic analysts, uh, before making the statement. The day we ran this past all of them, we've been working on this since last year. And at this time, we would like to support the mayor and council of Benson 100% in this project for ADI. So, if you need any of that information from me, feel free to contact me, and, uh, we'd be more happy to share it with you. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Niski Bloom.
Wow, tough act to follow. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, so if you don't mind just looking at the people behind me, I want to let you know, this is, I would guess that most people here are not in favor of the plant. Um, feel free to lift up your signs, guys. But this is actually just a fraction of the people in the community. I have talked to so many people. Initially, I created a space on Facebook for people to discuss. I saw that it was overwhelming, some of the chit-chat groups, and I thought, well, that's gotta be kind of annoying to admins. Let's scoot over here so we can have an open conversation and learn about what this is. So we've been educating ourselves for a few weeks now, and we are now up to 830 people. That does include, you know, some city people and people that are kind of lurking in the plant, like, you know, people that are pro-plant and stuff, but that is like almost a quarter of our population. And I am here to offer you guys a way out, because I'd like to read a couple- And I am here to offer you guys a way out, because I'd like to read a couple things. So I'd like to comment on the warm, clean air. So on November 6, the AD representative said, was asked, "What will be emitted from the stacks? Warm air, but clean air?" So I will go ahead and read to you what the truth is, and that is, that is a discrepancy with the ADAQ air dispersion modeling report of December 2024 and potential to emit calculations. The 218-acre facility would emit more than 52 tons of fine particulate matter, PM 2.5, that's very small, annually, much of it likely containing aluminum compounds along with significant quantities of nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and hazardous air pollutants, including hydrogen chloride. Many of these emissions are fine enough to penetrate into the lungs and bloodstream and depending on the dosage and frequency, could contribute to serious respiratory and neurological harm. Aluminum dust in particular does not degrade and can accumulate in soils, water, and living tissue. Over a decade, the facility could deposit a significant burden of aluminum-laden dust. There is a discrepancy in the information that was given to this planning and zoning. In fact, this is another question that came up. Planning and zoning actually asked the Aluminum Dynamics representative this question: "Could this project be brought before council?" Well, that's evidence, like, did planning and zoning not know that they had the option to send this before you guys? So I would like to just formally ask you guys to rescind and revoke the conditional use permit that you have granted. I am asking for the city council to consider the one quarter of the population of Benson that is concerned about this. And I want to also say, we looked for a home before we moved from Tucson seven years ago. We looked for seven years. We are a homeschool family. We have raised four children. We still have two at home. We have children in sports. And we moved out here to teach our kids agricultural lifestyle, to have ag science, to grow organic vegetables, and to give our children a different way of life. It was different than the drive-by shooting that was in Tucson when we lived in Tucson. And this was our dream. We looked for seven years in Cochise County, and there is growth happening. Pretty soon, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, Benson will be a suburb of bail because people like me don't want our children harmed in Tucson. And I have been here seven and a half years now. And we, this was our dream, to grow our kids in a rural setting. This is our dream home. We come here, we see flags. It's okay to be excited about Fourth of July here. That is not what Tucson has to offer. They have to offer decapitations and crime and machete attacks in Target. And you know what? This is where we chose to live, and this is our dream. And you know what? We have a couple sayings in the group now. One man's job isn't worth another man's water. And there are people who have built equity in their homes for years by, with blood, sweat, and tears, and they're going to have to say goodbye to that. What happens when we can't sell our homes when the faucet doesn't turn on? And I want you to look at this portion of people. That is a small representative to the people that I talk to all the time on Facebook that are coming to me and saying, "Thank you for giving me a voice. Thank you for getting the information out." And here's my other question. How many other people in Benson don't know this is happening? This is right across the street from a nursing home. We need to take care of our elders. We need to take care of our children. They deserve us to be a voice. You know, I lost my father-in-law this year, and we sat by his bedside for a week, saying goodbye to him and walking him home. And you know what I see when I lose people in this life? They are not saying, "I wish I made another dollar." They're saying, "I wish I had more time." And I ask you to revoke and rescind the conditional use permit and take a vote on it, because right now, it's not looking like you guys represent the community of Benson. And my last question to you guys, my last question to you guys is, since this is a highly flammable plant, what is your evacuation time? If you were forced to evacuate the vicinity of Benson, how quickly could you get those people out? There's like I-10. We could either go to Douglas, or we could go to Wilcox, or we could go to Tucson. How quickly could you safely get people if there was a fire? And that thing, there's aluminum plant, fires all over the place. How quickly could you get the people to safety? Okay, we don't want another Colorado River situation. We don't want our place, our valley poisoned. Please, rescind and revoke your conditional use permit. There are scared mothers, and we want to stay here. We bought our 150-acre farm, and we were never planning on leaving. This is our dream, and this is a lot of their dreams. Don't make us give up our dreams for ninety measly jobs.
Next, we have Ms. Tara Davis.
It's been a long evening, I'm sure for you guys, more so than some of us. So thank you for your time, and I know you guys have had a lot of facts spit at you tonight, so I hope you're, I hope you're still with me, because I do, and I want to make this an agenda item somehow, I want to have at the end of this, our community working with our city council, representing each other, having faith in each other. And I think the only way that we can possibly pursue that together is to look at the ways to repeal the vote that happened at the planning and zoning meeting on November 6, 2024. There are several options for that. One, clearly, they, I don't believe that they were qualified. That's no insult to them. This is a Title V permit company, industry. It is a big deal. You know, I didn't see any requests for a light study, a noise study, a pollution study, a water study. It didn't look like any of that was asked at the time. I don't know how they could have possibly been equipped, you know, to handle that. And then the precedent that it sets for the, for the 88-foot, Benson doesn't want 88-foot high buildings. How are you ever going to be able to tell another industry no? If you told sort of this conglomerate of everything that you could stand against, if you told them yes, who could we possibly say no to? I did notice about a year before, in 2023, a maverick sign was going before the planning and zoning in the action minutes and the approved minutes. And it seemed, and that was just a, they already had the sign. It was just to increase the height of the sign fourteen more feet. And even in that one, there was a motion made. I don't know if the minutes are correct or not, but it said that the planning and zoning team commission would recommend the council approve it. And so to me, like, that's the direction, right? The people, we have, we should have the power. We pick you to hold our place of power for us, and other people get hired. It would be preposterous to me that you guys didn't have more power than, than the PZ. This is, this is no insult, I assure you. It's just a matter of trying to understand how we come back together, because it's, it's really, you know, unfortunate to see. This is a great community. I think you can tell that people love it. We need a hero, you know, and it might be you guys, because we don't want this in our community for so many reasons. So I would like to understa, I did see online that the city has a board of appeals. It doesn't look like it's been used or met or nothing's been posted since 2022. But is that something that's available to the citizens? Is that a route? Help us, you know, to, to make our voices heard and, and to work together to get what's good for all of us. And you know, maybe the citizens were asleep at the wheel too, and the intent of posting is not to cover your, your heiny, right? It's to garner feedback and elicit feedback from your community. That's, that's the reason that we, we put the posts up. I think it's clear based on how much feedback you got back in 2024 that those posts did not reach anybody. And the, the PZ handbook says that they can, the city development director can request additional sources to get the word out. I think that that's another area where you can see, now that the word is out, there's so many people interested in this decision. And so I, I would like to, for you to consider adding, and, and I can go down and fill out the paperwork too, but how to, what that board of appeals looks like, if that's an avenue for us as citizens to, to try to help you. I imagine you're in a terrible position, and it's probably easier to talk to Aluminum Dynamics, but you are not their mayor and council, you are ours. We, and, and we want, and we want to support you. And, and I think that's, that gets lost a little bit too, and I think that you want to support us has been lost just a little bit in this, but if we could just try to get just a little bit back to who we are and our roots, and if you help us do this, I really think that everybody, the respect can be returned. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Christine Austin.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I moved here 28 years ago from Green Valley in Sarita, Arizona. I'm sure everybody knows where that is. I lived, as the crow flies, about two miles from a open pit mine, Cypress Mine. Actually, there were three mines in the town. There's Cypress, Sarco, and Devoe Mine. And I lived near Cypress. And I was pregnant during 1997. She was seven and a half months long. And I know you just spoke earlier about how you're for children and families. Well, I wish somebody would have said that in Green Valley in Sarita, but nobody did. So at seven and a half months, I had a stillbirth. Her heart stopped beating, went to the hospital. Doctors said she's dead. Soon after, I finally delivered her, and that was a long process. I was approached by a group of people, 75 people to be, that were in the whole group. Seventy-five people came forth, and they had a class-action lawsuit against Cypress Mine. This is 1997. So I was told by a doctor to get tested. So we encouraged the group to get tested. Not everybody did, but there was 30 of us that did. All 30 were high in lead, cadmium, and aluminum. My daughter died because the doctors said the metal leached through my placenta and killed her. Like I said, this was 1997. I moved here 28 years ago. My experience was literally hell on earth. Now, I moved here to get away from a place like Cypress Mine. They had smelters. The EPA stepped in. EPA said, "You people are burning and polluting in 100 times excess of what you were allowed." What happened? Well, we didn't get to go to court. That didn't happen, because money talks, and lawyers have a lot of it. So that was pretty much, we went as far as we could. But the EPA stepped in and put a machine down in the Green Valley Library to measure the air quality, because it was so bad in Green Valley. They put a machine in that library so you could go in there and check the air quality on a daily basis. This was 28 years ago, and I don't believe the machine is there anymore. Because what happens is it just starts all over again. Some woman is going to lose her baby. And then what? Another stillbirth, a bunch of cancer patients. And we also had a lot of people that had Parkinson's. It's very common in, in that type of pollution area. So that's all I have to say. I hope you people really think about what you're doing. Thank you.
Next, we have Crystal.
Hi again. Crystal Anderson, thank you for allowing me to speak as well. Um, I have been down a lot of rabbit holes in the last three weeks. One of them has been chasing Bill Glasser for some information that he just won't give me. And anytime we request from the city information, it seems to be stonewalled as well. So I went out on my own, and I talked to an engineer that builds cooling towers, and he knows everything about them. And he laughed when I said Bill Glasser said 5%. But they're going to reclaim 3% of that, so it's really 2% evaporate. And he laughed and said, "You can't reclaim evaporated water." And let me go ahead and tell you that with the dimensions from their permit application, he said that the evaporate would probably be 8%, if not more. He's going to get back to me with the numbers, and I plan on giving a full analysis to the city. Also, with that, when I was doing numbers with 5%, it came out to over 1,200 homes a year worth of water. And if my calculations are wrong, please tell me, is that bigger than 90? Because I don't think 90 jobs are going to pay for 1,200 homes. I don't think it's going to pay for the resources that this company is going to take out of our state. It's just like Wilcox and their alfalfa fields, and they're shipping them to Saudi Arabia. So they're going to be taking all of our resources and shipping their product out of state as well. Why is Arizona have to keep supplying everything for the rest of the world? We need to supply for our town. We need to supply for Benson, not for Mississippi. And I think it's really important for you guys to consider this. Instead of being good for Mississippi, let's be good for Benson.
Next is Kenny Gens.
Yes, it's me, I'm back. I think whenever you guys take on a project, you guys ought to do your homework. Okay? Example, maybe go down to the international border where Canada is and just sit there with a lounge chair and watch all the pollution that comes across the border. Because you know why? They don't regulate it, not like we do. You know? And if you think it's a good idea to put this aluminum plant, go to Hila Bend where the town kicked them out, like we're going through right now.
That's right.
Okay? And ask them why. The reason why is because nobody wants it. And the town before that, the same thing. This is an unwanted thing. And I don't know why you guys are trying to put a square cube in a round hole. It's, it's not going to work. You guys really need to do your homework. Do some impact studies. See what it does to the environment. Think about the future generations that are going to live here. Think about the people that are going to die, all because of 90 people being unemployed. I mean, this, I think a third grader could have done a better job than what you guys decided, honestly. Because at least they know right from wrong. You guys really need to pull these permits, because if not, go up, go up to Hila Bend and find out what happened to their town. Same thing's going to happen to Benson. They're going to, we're going to rear our ugly head. You woke up a sleeping bear. And that's all I get to say.
Next, we have Ms. Janelle Dobash.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Let's see, some of this may be repetitive, and I apologize. But I'd like to say not bringing this important project before the council for a public hearing with discussion was very upsetting and disheartening for Benson residents. This is your role in representing them. This is your role in representing them. The online petition opposing the aluminum plant has now reached one thousand five hundred and ninety-four signatures. It's not too late to make this right. Aluminum Dynamics materially misrepresented the facts during the November sixth, two thousand twenty-four planning and zoning hearing. A question was asked, what, quote, what will be emitted from the stacks, end quote. Aluminum Dynamic President, Mr. Pushes, responded, quote, "Warm air, but clean air," end quote. This could not be further from the truth. Per Aluminum Dynamics application with A D E Q for a Title V permit, they included multiple pages of chemicals that could be emitted from this secondary smelter. A few of the over forty potential harmful chemicals being emitted throughout the different plant processes are carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, volatile organic compounds, metal hazardous pollutants, and greenhouse gases. Aluminum Dynamics has admitted that some of these chemicals will exceed thresholds in a twenty-four hour period. That's also on their A D E Q application. When researching aluminum dynamics' parent company Steel Dynamics, ninety-three violations are listed by their subsidiaries, and over eleven and a half million in fines. The violations include water pollution, air pollution, environmental violations, and ninety-three safety-related offenses. Is this the type of corporation that makes a great neighbor? Absolutely not. Please, do the right thing and do not allow Aluminum Dynamics to make a home in Benson while destroying this wonderful town. And the very last thing I would ask is if anyone opposed, would please stand?
I think you, and our last speaker is Mr. James Guerrero.
Good evening, council members. I, I had a long speech in my phone, not gonna bother with that. They've talked about everything that I want to talk about. Um, I want to talk about the elderly folks. My mom's a hospice nurse here in the county, Mary Ann Young. Um, show of hands, how many people are over the age of seventy in here? Look at that. Thank you. Yeah, a lot of them don't have social media. A lot of them, they don't have the Herald, they don't have online access, they don't subscribe to it. So the way that you informed our town is unacceptable. It really is. I've been informing my neighbors. Ray? Ray Ranger Man? This man right here, Ray, I just met him. He's one of my neighbors. Great man. Him and his wife Bonnie had no clue about this. I found out June twenty-fourth. I, I just think it's unacceptable. You gotta inform us. You have our addresses, you send us property tax bills, send us a letter. I live about halfway up the hill in the heights, off of Silverwood on Hillcrest. I have a perfect view of the San Pedro River, of the train bridge, everything. It's gonna be ruined. What do you think that's gonna do to my property tax value? Yeah. Um, it's gonna kill my value. I don't want this, I don't want this for any of these people. And if you are gonna go forward with this, start informing the elderly so they can make plans to get out of here. A lot of people moved here for clean air. Their doctors recommend them to move here. It's, it's important what you're doing.
Next is Tudor. I have Ms. Tudor.